Since this is a regular call meeting, if there's anything you want to add to or pull off to discuss, we can. If none, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm in motion.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the agenda. And a second. Any more comment? All in favor? Motion carries. Alright. Recognitions, Mr. Southern. Hell, let's not turn power on. Can everybody hear me? Yes? Alright. We have several recognitions to make tonight, as you can see, so many that we had to have a new location for tonight's board meeting. Obviously, this wasn't going to be able to happen if we tried to have it in the boardroom. Everybody would be out in the hallways and in the parking lots. But we wanted to recognize all these students for their accomplishments and for their achievements at this time, and that's why we had to be in here in the cafeteria. We're going to recognize tonight, students from the regional academic competition. We're also going to recognize students that participated in the state beta competition, and then as well as some art conservation, writing, and art projects as well. So we've got three different groups we're going to recognize. You can see, we have several students, so just bear with me. We'll kind of go in order. When I call the student's name, if you're here, if you'll come up, I'd like to present you with your certificate. And if your parents or whoever is with you, if they want to get a picture of us presenting that to you, we'll do that right here, in front of this backdrop. And then, if there's multiple winners or recognitions from a given school, I have you wait to the side after we do the individual photo, and then we'll do a school photo together, okay? And if no one objects, then we'll put all these on Facebook tomorrow with their names and what they achieved or what they accomplished, if everybody's okay with that. We'll begin, just bear with us, we have quite a few. Up first, we're going to look at the academic team for the regional meet, and I have a student from Beaverdome Elementary. Asher Alvey was first place in composition at that regional meet. Asher, are you here? Come over here, buddy. Picture here. Hand this to you, you shaking a hand? Congratulations. First place, that's quite an accomplishment. Good job. Thank you. From Fortsville Elementary. Placing fourth in math is John Moxley. Is John with us? Congratulations, John. Good job. Get your mom here, where we can get your picture. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, good job. Alright, we have a few students from Horse Branch Elementary. Up first, we would like to recognize Chaz Bernard. Is that correct? Fifth place math. If I mispronounce your name, when you get up here, tell me and I'll make that correction, okay? Is that correct, Chaz? And if you will wait right over here to the side, that way, once the rest of your Horse Branch students finish, we'll get a group photo. Finishing fifth place in arts and humanities, Samantha Jones. Congratulations. Third place, arts and humanities, Andrew Whiteley. Did I get that right, Andrew? Also, Andrew, I failed to read this, he also finished second place in language arts. That way, we'll put all of you guys on the same photo, okay? Just hold your certificates up there. Somebody wants some more pictures, I'll back here. Thank you, guys. Have one from Southern Elementary. Fifth place, language arts, Sophie Hines. Congratulations, Sophie. From Wayland Elementary. Finishing fifth in science is Adeline Leach. Does this microphone even doing any good? It does work a little bit? Thank you very much. Congratulations. Adeline, will you come back real fast? Sorry, this will last a little longer. Do that again, that way we can have a picture for Facebook, please. Yes, next, we have a few from Western Elementary. Up first, finishing fourth place in written composition, Liz Stewart. Get the right certificate there, Liz. Congratulations. If you'll wait right over here on the side, when we finish with Western, we'll get everybody in a group photo. Second place in social studies is J.C. Reed. Congratulations, J.C., good job. Second place. Wait right over here. Next up was the quick recall team, and they finished overall in fifth place, and they're already up here, but one of those participants was J.C. Reed. Another team member is Liz Stewart. Also on the team is Abby Easterling. Also on that team is Katie Duncan. Also on that team, and I will apologize right now if I mess up your name, okay? You have to correct me. Malika Smith? Malika?
Malika.
Malika, thank you. Malika Smith, not here? The last member of that quick recall team is Mr. Jacob Ball. Thank you. Come back this way, I won't bother. At least not on purpose. Good job, thank you all. Up next, we're Ohio County Middle School. We're still on the academic competition, the regional. Finishing fifth in composition is Riley Ben. Is Riley here? Alright, next up, we're going to move to the Beta Club Awards. And this is for the young men and women that went and participated in state beta competition, and they have placed at the state level, and all of these students, as my understanding, by placing at state, they qualified to go and participate in the national competition that I believe is in Oklahoma City, perhaps?
Yes.
So we're going to start with some participants from Southern Elementary. I have a little bit here to read, I'll read about it, and then I'll tell you who's coming up. Says Southern Elementary Schools Beta Club qualified at the State Beta Leadership Summit to compete in lead outside the box challenge at the national level. This is the club event. However, the students who presented our club's project that were at the summit were Sophie Hines. Please come on up. Yes, if you will send them right over here to the side, get the rest of your teammates up here. Audrey Greenwell. Good job, Margaret. Congratulations. For certificate. Also, I should have said, when Sophie came up here, not only is she a part of this team, but it looks like she's also going to compete for a national leadership rep position as well, so what's that position?
I am one of Kentucky's leadership representatives, and I voted nationals to compete with everybody else, but there are other leadership representatives as well.
Very good. Also on that team was Riley Lobson. Riley Lobson. And also, that was there at the state level and presented was, is it Hala Hall? How about Ally Hall, would that be right? Hala? Hala Hall? And I'm butchering some of that. She's honestly not here tonight, but she also placed second in visual arts there at the state competition, and fifth in solo performing arts. Going to the national level for this event, Sophie is going to attend, Audrey is going, Riley is going. Also going to present at the national level is Mr. Landon Davis. Is Landon here? Brett Smith is also going to participate with that. Also for Southern Elementary. Second in the language arts assessment was Ms. Keely Westerfield. Now, Keely, didn't you just recently represent? The district in something else? And what was that? This was our district spelling bee champ right here, and she just participated not too long ago at the state. Next up, we have several students from Wayland that we would like to recognize, and this as well is for a Beta Club. Wow. This first one is actually, after going to competing there at the state, is now the vice president of the State Beta Club, is Presley Bishop. Vice President. Congratulations. Is that the same? If you'll wait over here to the side. Here's another one of those that Sophie was sharing with us, a regional leadership representative, Micah Vaughn. Congratulations. Second place in handmade jewelry is Savannah Ball. Congratulations, Savannah. Look all over there. First place in recyclable art, Andy Brooks. Congratulations. This next group, the whole group participated in the campaign skit, and they finished in fifth place there at the state level. So there's several, we'll call them up one at a time, but there's several on this group. So let's begin with Ryan Kaufman. Congratulations. Wait over here to the side. Chaz Brazil. Brayden Lindsay. Congratulations. Did both the same thing. Carly Liger. Mary Elizabeth Lewis. Landry Roberts. Brady Porter. Aiden Ferris. Daxton Smith. Congratulations. Jacob Stamper. Lola Stevens. Congratulations. Taylor Gary. Emma Schrader. Meg Shopley. Ellison Storm. Congratulations. Jocelyn Allen. Something else I'll say about her, she also finished in fourth place in photography. Malia Lindsay. Congratulations. Kylie Brown. Last but not least, Eli Schrader. Again, all these students will have the opportunity to go and compete in Oklahoma City in another June. You all come back up here for a group photo for Wayland, please. Alright, now we have a few students at Western Elementary for the Beta Club that we recognize. Up first, this individual was named the state champion in the performing arts division, and that is Stephen Powell. If you wait right over here, we can get a couple others. The next group of students all qualified to go to the national competition in the area of rapid response. Aiden McIntyre. Ethan Ashworth. Juliana Gonzalez. Gracie Smith. And Maddie Wilson. And Maddie Wilson. Very good. You guys all come up here for a photo of Western. Next up are some students from Ohio County High School. A couple of them were not able to be with us tonight because they're participating in other activities. But I want to mention him nonetheless. Up first would have been Chandler Aquaviva. And Chandler is participating in a tennis match tonight, so that's why he's not able to be with us. But let's give a hand for Chandler, please. Landon Littleton. Kenzie Emery. She is at a soccer match this evening, so she's not able to be with us. Alright, now we have Ohio County Middle School. Alright, up first, second place in language arts, and I believe she's unable to be with us tonight, is Xandy Hoover. Third place in math, Anna Parker. Second place in woodworking, Jayden Peach. This next group of students actually placed first place in Song Fest. And so there are several that we'll recognize, but again, first place in Song Fest, that's pretty good. Kendall Addington. Georgia Beasley. Michaela Fields. Mackenzie Brown. Isabel Gary. Chloe Keely. So I heard somebody say it's actually Keel. Thank you.
That's alright.
Alena Lindo. Sarah Martin. Caitlin Rothgerber. Aubrey Sanford. Autumn Wilson. Savannah Barker. Caleb Brown. Raya Burton. Josie Buds. Anna Cruz. Casey Emery. Jude Hall. Jordan Fulton. Keely Henderson. Angela Ho. Angela, as she's coming up here, also finished first place in photography. Cameron Kennedy. Caroline Law. Skylar Looney. Sierra Midgiff. Lacey Minson. Kristen Mohan. Leila Moore. Brooklyn Bucket. Presley Stewart. Sophia West. Sophia also placed fifth place in recyclable arts. Do you group photo? Thank you. With all the Beta, that was all the Beta students. Now, our last group this evening that we want to recognize is the Ohio County Conservation District. They have a contest, I believe it's each year, and they do that both in art and in writing. And it's for grades six through twelve for the writing portion, and grades five and below for the art portion. Out of each school that participates, they choose a first, second, and third. And then they also have a first, second, and third for the county winner. So let's begin with the writing competition at Western Elementary. Finishing third was Aiden McIntyre. Finishing second at Western is Trigden Chin. Finishing first at Western, Charlie Saly. At Ohio County Middle School in Writing, finishing third is Jake Simmons. Finishing second there at the middle school is Brooklyn Arty. Finishing first there at the middle school is Alexis Dunn. The county winners, finishing third in Ohio County is Charlie Saly. Finishing second in the county in Writing is Brooklyn Arty. And finishing first, we have here this evening, is Alexis Dunn. Alright, thank you, congratulations. Alright, now we're looking at the art contest. And at Western Elementary, in third is Scripture Dixon. Finishing second at Western is Melissa Whitler. Finishing first at Western would be Liz Stewart. At Layland in the art contest, finishing third is Joseph Munoz. Finishing second at Layland is Wyatt Hughes. Finishing first at Layland is Ariel Brunner. Do you pass forward? Do you get Layland's photo? Alright, thank you. Alright, now for the county winners in art. Finishing third is Melissa Whitler. Finishing second from Western, Liz Stewart. Finishing first in art for Ohio County, from Wayland, Ariel Bruner. You guys come over here for the three county winners? Thank you all. That concludes all of our student recognitions, and all that took awhile, but thank you for your patience, and after all, that's what we're here for. Any chance we get to recognize students, that's what we're about. We love taking that time and that opportunity to recognize them for their accomplishments. With that being said, this is an appropriate time unless you want to stay for the rest of the evening, this would be a great time for you to dismiss. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for being patient. Alright, was there any questions?
No, sir.
Authority members?
No.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I'll try to be brief since we've already been here for awhile now, but for a good reason why we are already an hour and two in the meeting. This is my third board meeting, but this is the first one, I guess, since officially now being named superintendent instead of interim superintendent. Just want to say that I'm thankful for the opportunity, humbled for the opportunity. I'm excited, looking forward to the challenge. We have a great district, we have a wonderful community, I believe that we have an outstanding school district, and so much to be proud of and thankful for, and it starts with you all, so we appreciate you all very much. But our leadership that we have at the district level, as well of all the schools, and the staff that we have in place, I think we're set up for great things in the future. And again, I'm thankful for the opportunity, and I can assure you that we'll always do things with the kids' best interest at heart, and again, I'm looking forward to the opportunity and challenge, so thank you very much.
Thank you. You've had time to look over your consent. I have motion to approve the consent.
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion, I have a second. I'll take the motion. Any questions or any more discussion? All in favor? Alright, new business. You have your personnel report? Treasuries report, let's go.
Of course, this is the report for the month of February, and in the second column, we started the month with a beginning balance of fifteen million, eighty-one thousand, eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Our total revenues were two million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three-fifty-eight, fifty-two, less our expenditures of two million, six-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, five-eighty-six, seventy-four, leaving an end-of-month general ledger balance of fifteen million, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, seven-ninety, forty-four. Our Hilliard Lines investments, on the market value, the amount was two million, twenty-five-thousand, one-thirty-six, oh-six, and the payout value, just a little bit above that, of two million, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six, eighty. Our bank balance, we began the month with fifteen million, five-eighteen, one-fifteen, eighty-six. Our deposits and other credits totaled two million, seven-hundred-and-seven thousand, eight-thirty-two, seventy-one. You can see our seek allotment, which is the same as it was last month, but over prior year, the state and federal grant proceeds totaled just under three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars. Our food service, federal reimbursement, two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, eight-ninety-two, ninety. Our property taxes collected totaled one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, eight-thirty-three, oh-eight. Utilities taxes, collected through the revenue cabinet of one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, I'm sorry, I got off the line there. Property tax, one-hundred-and-seventy-three, three-fifty, fifty-eight, and utility taxes, one-hundred-and-thirty-six, eight-thirty-three, oh-eight. Motor vehicles, sixty-eight thousand, seven-thirty-two, thirty-three, and bank interest, thirty-one thousand, one-seventy, thirty-eight. You can see the other smaller ones listed there. And checks and other debits totaled two million, five-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, five-ninety, eighty, less our outstanding checks, left an end-of-month reconciled balance, again, of fifteen million, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, seven-ninety, forty-four. So that's a little over one-point-eight million greater than last year at this point in time. The next page on the report just shows the breakdown by fund, showing the beginning receipts, expenditures, and ending balances, and there again, that end-of-month balance of fifteen million, one-seventy-seven, ninety, forty-four. Is there any questions about anything on the report? Thank you all.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Motion for Treasuries report?
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Karen. Two thousand and eighteen, nineteen amended school calendar.
That should be on your Chromebooks there, the amended calendar. Basically what we have proposed there, obviously we're out of school next week for spring break, then when we get into the month of May, since none of our schools are a polling place any longer, and it's not a presidential election, we can go to school on Election Day. So that's what I have proposed there, and that would put us out with the students the last day of school on May twenty-fourth. That's not eliminating any days, that's going to school all hundred-and-seventy-three days that we'd originally planned, so it's not using any bank time, and we could go, again, complete all of our hundred-and-seventy-three days, and our students could get out on May twenty-fourth, and then we would just have one day for staff to come in for Closing Day.
Congratulations on that Friday.
Possibly that'd be our next, that's the next agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, and motion approved, I'll second amended school calendar. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Graduation date?
The graduation ceremony date, the high school has asked that we consider May twenty-fourth, that would be that last day of school, that Friday evening, that's basically what they did last year on a Friday evening, and I think that went over really well, and they were able to have project graduation afterwards on a Friday night instead of everybody being out, you know, on Saturday night. Plus, I think that is also the time of year that there is a festival going on downtown in Beverdown, and I think they would love for us to consider having it on Friday night as well. So that would be my recommendation, but that's up to you all, but my recommendation would be to have it on Friday night, May twenty-fourth. The middle school would therefore be Thursday, the twenty-third.
What time did we do that last year?
Last year we did seven o'clock, but this year we were wanting to possibly six o'clock. I know I had a daughter who graduated last year, so it missed each other, but after the graduation ceremony, it's so late that you can't really do anything, so I was thinking if it's six, it'd be a quick turnaround, but ceremony might be around eight, and it's just time to go do something with the family before they come back to project graduation. That's what we were kind of thinking.
Alright, we have a recommendation from the superintendent, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, twenty-fourth is six o'clock?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I have a question. Is there any way we can get a fan on stage behind? Dwight and I need a fan.
Yeah, and then the flyers.
Yeah, the flyers, no flyers.
Yeah, you get flowers, just change those that don't.
Put them down there by Karen.
Are you gonna block off the front here for handicap?
Yes, yes, we're gonna try to handicap all of the front, but people out there and everything.
Alright, approved bids for security entrance, so no mention.
Alright, you have those bids in front of you. We actually did the bid opening today at two o'clock, and if you're like me, when you see those figures on the bids, your eyeballs probably grew a little bit. I think RBS, when they set out this project, they had anticipated costing between forty to fifty thousand, and you can see that the bids were eighty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and eighty-three thousand and seventy-one dollars. That is a great deal higher than what was anticipated or projected. After talking with RBS this afternoon, there's concern as to some of the bids, and talking with one of the contractors, the electricals portion of the bid was very high, I think around thirty thousand dollars, and RBS projects that it should really cost about seven thousand dollars to do the electrical work, so they're wondering if there hasn't been some type of confusion that has occurred with the bid specs. So really, tonight you have three options, and then I'll tell you, after I tell you the three, which one that I would recommend. Option one, really you have four options. Option one, take the bids, award one of them tonight and move on. Option two, reject the bids for this project, and really you could have it, two B, would be that we enter into competitive negotiations with both of these contractors, where basically what would take place, RBS would sit down with them and they'd go through all the numbers to try to make things better, to make sure that those figures are accurate, that they're correct, and if they are, consider, contemplate what could be removed from the project to bring the cost back down, and then we would relook at it again next month with the new figures. Or option three, I guess you would say, would just be to say that the project's a no-go. My recommendation would be option two, A and B, that we reject the bids tonight as presented, but that we would enter into competitive negotiations with both Allied Contracting and O'Brien Contracting, so that they can look at these numbers again, make sure that everybody's on the exact same page, and understands the scope of the project, getting mechanical engineers involved once again as well, and RBS feels like these numbers will change. They were just as surprised as you are tonight in seeing these figures, now this was not what they were expecting. So my recommendation would be to reject the bids tonight, and enter into competitive negotiations with both contractors, so that we can see hopefully what this project could really cost us, and then once those proposals come back, we would look at them at the April meeting.
I'll make a motion and take the superintendent's suggestion, reject the bids and go into negotiations.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. One motion or?
Do we need to reject the bids and then? You can do it all in one motion, it'll be fine.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Will there be any additional calls? Don't be an egg.
No, all of that's already been negotiated and their fee, on whatever the project is, they get a percentage.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Yes.
Will we still be looking at the same timeline, do you think, if we were to approve it?
It would still be during the summer, yes. It just might be July as opposed to June.
Well, maybe that should be part of the negotiation, to make sure that they will, no, the deadline is before school starts, that early office.
It can be, I just think there was sounds like there might be some confusion, because even one of these contractors had kind of indicated that he was subbing out part of this job, okay, because they have a bigger project elsewhere, so he was going to be the general contractor and have these subs completed. He mentioned today that he was shocked at some of his subcontractors' bids, and he even wonders, you know, do we make sure we're on the same page, but it was too late by the time we put the bid package together for him to go have those discussions. So I think we need to let them have that opportunity to see if things can improve, because that is a lot more than we ever anticipated spending on that project.
So we need to table?
Number five.
And six.
Yes, sir, both of those.
Alright, I need a motion to table item number five, entering the contract, the general contract.
I'll make that motion.
What do y'all made of it? Bet made a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Will second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Item number six, I need a motion to the table, rise PG one for this other project.
I'll make that motion.
And motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? We have a reasonable closed session.
Yes, sir, we do, personnel.
Alright, the motion going closed session for KRS six-one, point eight-one-oh.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, we have a motion, second. All in favor? Alright, we are now in closed session.